Are we on yet?
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. So, we're gonna open the assessors meeting and we're going to get some information on sale values versus assessed values. And we've been looking forward to the presentation. Don't trip over that.
So, I'm just gonna give you this and I'll walk you through it. This is gonna be more of a...
Can you push that over, please?
You need help?
Yes.
You want?
Push it over.
I'm reading.
We're doing this now.
Take it in and then if you have questions along with me, that's fine. And I'll try to get to the crux to sort of where I think we're at. So, this page that you have, every year the state sends out state evaluation.
Hey, we can't hear him if you're talking. You can talk outside.
State sends us a valuation, which is what they feel the valuation of your property should be.
Okay.
Nobody on the planet knows how they come up with that number.
Which line are we looking at?
No, we're not. We're not. I'm just talking.
Oh.
And so, every assessor sends the state every sale of every property so that they can compare what sale prices to the assessed values. And then that's, they do a ratio study. And that's what determines your certified, declared certified ratio. You're supposed to be kind of within 10%. It's kind of where you wanna be, around 90. So, as prices go up, sale prices go up, assessors are always chasing. These go up, the ratio goes...
Is it based within your community or you're talking about they give you?
Individual community, yeah.
Okay.
Every town's the same. So, this sheet right here, that you have, page one, is the ratio study that the state did the year of the revaluation.
Twenty twenty-two?
Yeah. So, it says 24. In the middle, it says 24. The state runs two years behind. So, they're always using, they're always using sales data 22 years prior. So, that's why you'll see, like, these are the sale dates. These are all gonna be like 21 or 22, even though this is a 24.
Right.
So, at the time you did the revow, your ratio is 45%, right there, which is really low.
Right. We knew that it was bad.
So, that's why you need a revow. And then over here is a quality rating. Okay, quality rating. And that's 31. Now, quality rating is, represents how good your assessments are to sale prices.
And what's the best score? Thirty-one out of what?
Zero. One to 100. One to 100. So, if every single sale price was exactly the same as every single assessment, you have a quality rating of one. It's perfect.
Oh, so one is perfect?
One's perfect. That never happens.
Okay.
Ten is the goal. State says you wanna be within 10%.
So, 31 is a percent?
It's a, yeah, it's a, I'm getting it.
Okay.
So, a really good quality rating is single digits. Ten or 11 is kind of where you wanna be. And what that means is if 100 is average, then if you have a quality rating of 10, then your average is 90 to 110. That's your, right? 100 is average, you get 10% either way. So, if you have a quality rating of 10, all of your assessments are within 10% high or low. The larger that quality rating gets, the further away you are from where you should be. Meaning, like, if your quality rating's 30, then instead of 90 to 110, it's like 70 to 130. See what I mean? Your average can still be 100, but you have a lot better down here.
And who does the quality rate?
State. It takes...
Same people that do the evaluation that you don't know where they're getting the numbers from?
Yeah, yeah. But this, but this, you know, the total valuation, that's a different thing. This is numbers. This they're not making up. This is just mathematical deviation and mean and average and all that stuff. So, if you have a quality rating, which you did back then, 31, that means if your average was 100, you had some properties that were assessed for like 70,000 and you had some that were assessed for like 130,000. They're wrong.
Well, what is it now?
Well, I'm getting it. Just bear with me, it's gonna take a little, I'm trying not to make your brain hurt too much. So, that's why you need a revow, because your ratio is 45%, which means on average, all of the assessed values were half of what they probably should've been. And your quality rating was 31. The numbers that are written in here, are handwritten on that, are the new assessed values after the revow. So, they wrote them in. And then the handwritten number to the right, which is like starting top, 86, 37, 61, 62, all of those, those are the new ratios.
So, the very first one is 141014 instead of 46?
Right.
So, that would give it compared to 165 and 86 quality rating?
No, a ratio.
Oh, ratio.
It's a percentage.
And isn't it, isn't it like, if I remember right from that, you know, Assessor Responsibilities for Select Board Members, isn't the average like around 70% the expectation of assessments?
No.
Compared to market value?
No.
Should we not let Mark continue and then we can delve into it?
Okay, well...
It's okay. So, so what this sheet is, is you can see on the first one, the assessed value was 46,000. It sold for 165. It was changed to 141. And now it's 86 instead of 28. Does that make sense?
When did it sell?
In 21, seven of 21. There's the sale date, yeah, over here.
Okay, so this date over here is the selling date?
Yeah.
And this, okay, and this assessment was done when?
That's the revow. That's the new...
Oh, that's the revow.
Number.
And the revow was done after the sale, correct?
No, after.
No, that was after.
After.
But the sale was in 21. And then the revow was in 22.
I read that was 22 and 23.
Yeah, 22 and 23.
So, you with me?
I am.
So, so what, what I found interesting about this is that these are the selling, this is what they were, this is what they sold for. And then after revaluation, when you go through the whole process and you analyze everything that has sold and you reassess everything kind of where it should be, which is kind of around 90% of what it sold for, these, these new ratios should all be pretty close to the same, right? Like, you're...
That's assuming the state's got it right, with their numbers, right?
No, no, these are, no, these are numbers that, that were the assessor changed them to. These are the new numbers.
So, is there like, did the fact that like in 22, I don't remember if it was 22 or 23, you know, in the town of Quebec, we usually had like 28 real estate transactions. And in 22 or 23, we had like, you know, 100 and...
Yeah, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter.
Well, 'cause the real estate value so, went extreme during that period.
That's okay. So, but these are, these are priced, these are known sale prices.
Yeah.
That happened in 21 and 22.
Yeah.
So, these are known, like, this was, this was known information. So, if a property sold for, you know, 126,000, I have that information. Like, I know that property sold for 126,000. Or if a property sold for 300,000, I go, oh, that property sold for 300,000. And then you go and look at it and go, okay, well, what, what needs to be done here to sort of make it assessed for, you know, probably like 280 or 290 or something like that? So, what was interesting on these are, these are the new assessments after the revow. And the percentages, the ratios are really inconsistent.
No, all over the place.
All over the place, right? But at the bottom, the average is 93, which is good. Okay? The average is fine. It's the...
Tells me there's a disproportion of people paying more taxes than the rest of us.
Yeah, it's not consistent.
Inevitably.
It's not consistent.
Yeah.
So, the next page, you can, the next page, this one. So, this is the same exact report, but it has the new sale prices. The handwritten ones are in here. They're typed in here. And so, the new ratio is 95%, right? So, that's what, this one came up to 93, but it was 95. But the quality rating was still a 28. The quality rating after revaluation should be nine, max. It just should.
So, that, that's the variation, that's saying that it's not evenly distributed correctly?
Right, which means there's, the average is okay, but it means that there's some that are way too low and some that are way too high. The average is okay. And the average is important. It is important. But when you have a quality rating like that, then, you know, it, it just, it sort of says that there's some too much of discrepancy. It's not the end of the world, but it, it's a, it's a, something to sort of look at. The next sheet, which is this one. So, what I did is I took, 'cause I'm the new guy. So, I went and went on MLS, I'm a Realtor, and wrote down all of the sale prices of these. So, these are newer sales. These are like in 24. These, all these sales took place in 24. And I just picked 30. And I compared the sale prices to the current assessment, which was after the revow. I didn't change anything last year. So, these are the current assessments. The average is 61, on average. 61 is low, right? And these range, of these 30, these range from 35% to 120. So, there's some that are way up and some that are low. Again, it should be around 90.
So, the bubble that everybody thought would burst eventually has none.
There's no bubble.
And there's still a 13 or 14% increase from last year's sales.
It's, there's no bubble. No bubble's coming.
So, Mark, I have a question.
Yeah.
So, not that I like to mirror anything California does, but do they, if there's a sale, does that become the new assessed value?
In California, I think, I think it's that.
I'm pretty sure the sale price becomes the assessed value.
New owner, 'cause the current owner can only be increased, I think it's like 1% a year.
Yeah, it has to, it has to sell.
Yeah.
If it, it's not the same if you just stay in your house.
In Maine, they use, it's called just value, market value. Because it's a, it's a consistent, it applies to everybody, right? The market is the market. And if, if, if prices continue to go up, if assessments continue to go up, the mill rate comes down.
Right.
Right? So, there's this big misconception that, oh, you know, assessments go up, my taxes are gonna go up. And that's not true. The budget's the budget's the budget. And if you have to raise, you know, a million dollars and, and, you know, the assessed value's a million, it's $1. If the assessed value is, you know, 100,000, it's, you know what I mean? It's like, it's, it's...
Depends on how many people are having to pay in.
Right. So, you're not raising more money, you're redistributing it more sort of equitably. Values go up, nobody comes down. So, this one, this snapshot of these 30 sales show me that assessments overall are still lower than they should be. And it has lost, sort of, I'd only say the lost revenue, but it's, it's undistributed tax burden, right? So, what this equates to is I took the sale price, which is that 9.2 million. That's what they all sold, right?
Yeah.
And they're assessed for 5.3 million.
Still off 30%.
And I said, well, what if they were assessed at 90%? Then it would be 8.3 million. So, the difference is 2.9. And at the mill rate of 19, that's 55 grand. So, like, that's 55,000 in theory that everybody else has to pick up.
Yeah.
And that's 30 properties, right? That's just 30. So, that's why, you know, if you, like, for example, if you go to the next page, this is a 2025 valuation. This is the state valuation. This is for 23, 230 million, 24, 283 million, and 25, 299 million. That's the number that I said, nobody really knows how the state comes up with that number. They take the valuations that assessors give them and then they do their, you know, factoring and state, you know, market rate and they apply it to everybody and they come up with the number. Interestingly, if you take the total valuation, which is the next page, this one, this was the commitment right after the revow. So, you guys were at 130 million total valuation before the revow. She did the revow and you were at 221 million, right? You with me?
Yeah, there was...
And the mill rate was, the mill rate was 15.4.
Thing that she screwed up. Was that part of that?
If you added 35% of that, which is kind of where I...
Make up the difference.
Yeah. It would equal the number that the state thinks you should have, which is probably where you should be. And if you put that value here, the mill rate would've been 11.6 instead of 15.4. It's a lot of value, right? And that moves the needle.
I don't wanna go down a rabbit hole, but I do have this nagging question. Where do they come up with 300 million? And does the state consider the median income in towns like Quebec compared to Callis, compared to Machias?
I think it's all, it's all, and again, I...
All property value.
How are we assessed more than Callis?
Well, the assessors give them the data that we have. I mean, we, we have to fill out massive amounts of like spreadsheets and stuff to tell them exactly what has sold compared to what it's assessed for.
Based on sale price, is it not?
It's all sale price, right.
That's what he told me when I talked to these guys.
So, how the state comes up with their perceived, you know, what they feel the town should be valued at, I don't know. And nobody...
Just feels like it's a lot of unnecessary pressure on the taxpayers. Just ridiculous.
I mean, interestingly, is if you kind of apply this general thing that I've done where I think, oh, it was probably more closer to 60%, should've been a 90%. If you put it at 90%, it kind of comes out to where the state thinks you should be. It's interesting, you know? So, I don't necessarily think the state's always off that much. What, what the reality is, is it's really hard for assessors to stay there.
Constantly chasing.
Right? Like, you're, we're always chasing. Sales, you know, market goes like this and assessors aren't out there like beaten down the door to get every single dollar assessed, right? So, they, consistency is more important than accuracy in assessing. Like, it's more important for everything to be either everything be low or everything be high. That's fair. But when you have this, that's when it is a little more, even if the...
Well, how do you approach that? I mean, what's, what's a...
So, it was interesting, so this 60% thing was like, oh, okay. 'Cause I thought things were low. Like, every time I saw something that would sell or I looked at an assessment, I tend to go, oh, that's really low. And then you start to dig in a little bit more and I go, okay, well, this, this is telling me it's like 30% or more low statistically.
Average, yeah.
Average, right? Average. Like, this is sale price assessment, sale price assessment, average. But it's a snapshot. The state kind of said we're here. One very interesting thing, this is, this one? You remember this one?
Yeah.
This is this year, 2025, ratio study from the state. So, this is 25, this one we just got. So, this is using data from 23. And you can see the sales are from 22 and 23 instead of 21 and 22. And now it's, it's 84%. And this is residential, you see this? This is residential study. They do different studies. They do just residential, they do just waterfront, and then they do it combined. So, residential is at 84 and the quality rating's still at 26. It's still, still not good. This is one year after the revow. Like, this is revow numbers. The assessments in here are from after the revow, right? So, they're, they're low. This one...
But then on the end, like, the last six or seven, the sale price is way lower than the assessed value. So, that's, that's awkward.
You have, again, it's never perfect, right? Nothing's ever like, after revow, it should be as close to perfect.
Is there a golden rule, like a percentage between sale and assessed value? Have you seen like percentages consistently?
I mean, 100% is the gold, right?
You want it to be the same.
10% is the 90. Like, the, like, state statute says, in right, state law, that an assessed value within 10% of just value is acceptable. Like, by law. If, if, if somebody came to me and their property was assessed for 200,000, I know I have 10% higher low. So, I know between 220 and 180 is acceptable, right? If they come to me and said, I think my property's worth 190, I can go, I'm within 1%. It's acceptable. So, we're given a 10% higher low. So, when you do a revow, you kind of wanna shoot for 100 and then maybe you back it down a little bit to give yourself some...
I mean, 24 looks worse than 23, based on what you shared earlier. We're up, we're at 60%. This was at 84%.
Yeah, so this one, so the next sheet, this is, this was like, I'm sorry. This is kind of, you know, sort of looking into things.
84% is better than 60%, is it not?
That's what I'm saying. 24 was 60%.
This one is, this is, this is 25. And this is the waterfront study. This says waterfront's at 66%. That's a concern to me.
Well, 11 is good.
11 is good. Now, that's interesting. So, what that says, you know what that says?
It says that the variation is, is...
They're all like this, but they're all low.
Too low, right.
So, they're consistently low.
And we don't want that, right?
Not at 66%.
No.
Waterfront is always a little lower than residential. The waterfront values go like that.
Can you pick categories to reassess? I mean, is, is it legal to say, we're gonna do in-town, we're gonna do waterfront, we're gonna do rural?
Show like this.
And that's what I had asked before, are there blocks?
Right. That's what I meant.
Residential is residential, commercial is commercial, and waterfront is waterfront. You can treat, that's why they do different studies to see. Because what happens is like I said, waterfront prices go like that and regular kind of like that. And so, if assessments don't, you know, they're different trajectories.
So, if you had to pick...
You can treat them differently.
If you had to pick, would you, would you do waterfront first as a block?
Well, it's, as an exercise, this is the first, the furthest I've delved into it to see that it appears that the waterfront assessments are lower significantly compared to non-waterfront. So, it is sort of, it does give fuel to, to consider an adjustment or a revaluation or, or...
Especially if what you do is, is the same, is similar to. As long as you're making it similar to the residential percentage, correct?
Well, right.
That would be fair. You would have to, that would justify fairness.
Waterfront, I wouldn't put waterfront at, you know, 95 or, because right now residential's at 84, right?
So, you, your goal would be like 84.
Or something.
So, it was fair.
To get them...
Can we do that?
I mean, you, you can. It's, it's, I need to do a little more digging, like, into it. 'Cause even though it's at 66, you gotta figure out, you know, it's not all the same, right? It's not just land or it's not just building or it gets a little complicated, right? Because if I change a building, if I change like a building cost per square foot, you have to either create a separate schedule for waterfront. So, it says if, if this house is on the water, it's $90 a square foot. If it's not on the water, it's $16 a square foot.
It seems to me that most communities would do that.
A lot do.
Well, what did Bar Harbor do? You worked there, right?
Yeah, downtown Bar Harbor is its own bubble. It's its own thing. Waterfront and non-waterfront in Bar Harbor could sort of be on the same. But downtown was just a different deal. So, like, there's downtown, we treated downtown.
Was it downtown more like commercial?
It was mostly commercial, but it's still residential stuff downtown was different. You know, like, if you took a house downtown that was worth like 800,000 and you put it like out in town hill, it wasn't worth it. See what I mean?
Okay.
Yeah.
But in, but in Trio, square foot is square foot. It doesn't necessarily know where it is, right? Unless you start factoring and doing some things, you can do that. So, that's a little complicated.
I was just gonna say, it sounded complicated.
It is, but that's, that's what we, that's sort of what we do.
Dan?
I just had three kind of questions there. One, I agree that the discrepancies in, in the properties is pretty crazy because I've looked into that.
Yeah, yeah.
One of the questions I have, at least at this point, for thinking about going forward, and I don't know how your job works, is an assessor allowed? Let's try that. Let's say somebody puts a house up for, you know, 1.6 million dollars for sale. Does that flag or at least give the assessor an opportunity to go, oh, well, I need to, oh, just for future reference? Okay, that house for sale, 1.6, and you go look in the books and it's assessed at $220,000? Are you allowed to, you just have to wait for that sale? Or, or let's say they take it off the market. Now, can you go in and go?
I mean, until, I mean, until it sells, it doesn't mean anything technically, right? But if somebody listed something for 1.6 and it was assessed for, you know, 500 or something, I would, I would, it would give me a cause to look at it just to see if the information that I have is right. So...
But until that sale, you can't, like, you can't adjust it now.
Oh, sure. No, 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 I could, yeah.
Because I'm thinking that would help...
How do you find it all out?
Going, well, it just brings you to what you can do going forward to try to maybe, as we're trying to bring that number up, at least get what's going forward. It just seems like a head start.
So, what I, I mean, what I would, what you do in those situations is the, the one thing you can't do as an assessor is, oh, that sold for 1.2, I'm gonna just, I'm gonna change the assessment to 1.2. Bang, can't do it.
And, and not touch anybody else's. So, that's, you have to do it as a block, correct?
You gotta look at like...
You're saying we're gonna do all of these in this group?
But what you can do as an assessor is go, okay, this sold for 800,000 and it's assessed for 300,000. Well, let me look at the information. And then I look either the information on MLS or I just go drive by and I look at it and then I go, oh, well, that's got a brand new roof. It's got a brand new siding. It's got a garage that I didn't have.
Oh, okay.
See?
Well, yeah.
So, then I can go, oh, well, I need to add the garage and I need to maybe change it from, you know, average to above average because it's got new stuff. But all of that is still, the amount that that goes up is based on the same square... But all of that is still, the amount that that goes up is based on the same square footage and the same cost of a garage that everybody else has. So it doesn't necessarily, it's not gonna get me to where it should be, but it's accounting for the quality and the condition and the grade, like, the square footage. Even if it's not right, the information's right.
Which they conversely work the other side, which is if something gets into a bidding war and is purchased.
Or something, sure.
At a higher price than actually the value of the home, and, you know, you can keep it there.
But the reason the information that is right is super important is because if and when you do a revow and you go, and like, like, let's say the, they got ten acres and there's, like, half of it's swamp, and so we've discounted the land by fifty percent, recognizing the swamp. And the base acre rate's ten thousand, and you do a revow, now the base acre's fifty thousand. It's still fifty percent off, because, see what I mean? So even though it's here, it's still being discounted for what it is. And so, like, getting that information, like, the square foot right, the acreage right, quality and condition, really important. Because if you do a, an increase of price per square foot, it's still average or above-average or good. And if you increase it, it's still above-average, good, see what I mean? So in Orono, for example, they did a revow, and they didn't do it well. And they, instead of just really going out and making everything, like, a house that was average, it's got everything brand-new, changing it to above-average, they just left it. They fiddle-paddled the numbers, they got the number to where it was, but it's still average. And then the sales come in, they're way up here, they're way up here, they're way up here, and I go out and look at it, and I'm like, it's not average, it's really nice. If I put it to above-average or good, bang, it's right. But they didn't change it. They just changed the numbers, which is, you know, this, this average thing is, I don't like to say smoking marriage, but this is, um, adjusting an average, which is where you want an average, but not, it's factoring, it's not really changing.
Well, no, because you could have a hundred and thirty-nine percent because it was a seventy thousand dollar property that, you know, about eighty as opposed to a five hundred thousand dollar property that should have been assessed, if it was assessed under the, it's a significant dollar amount when it comes down to the middle rate.
So, so the, the key to a revow is, the most important thing about a revow is to get the data right. And above all, it's quality and condition, because that's what changes, it's quality and condition. Some stuff is maintain, 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 brand-new, 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 and there's other stuff that's never maintained, deferred, deferred maintenance. And so that's below average, and then there's stuff, it's the same age house, this one below average, this one above average. They're not the same, right?
So, Mark, unfortunately, we have, like, about a five-minute left, because we have another rest of our meeting and a big public hearing at six.
Okay, I heard that.
And this is all very interesting, and I would like your, your recommendation as what you think we should do going forward.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I can, I can dig into it a little bit more, um.
And maybe, think about it a little more?
Yeah, it's, um.
But this is amazing work, really, I'm very impressed with all the.
It's numbers, yeah.
Mathematical numbers and, and explanation, complicated, but we certainly want to be on, on the level that we're supposed to be, don't you agree?
Well, I mean, again, you know, after, after a revow, it should be.
It should have been.
Yeah, it should, it should be closer, you know? Um, the certified ratio that came in from the state for this year for the declared certified ratio was eighty-four. And, um, which means you can't certify at a hundred, which means the homestead could go down, right? Um, I'm gonna look into that and see if, I want to make sure they have the right numbers, because it'd be good to, you know, keep the certified ratio at a hundred if we can, yeah.
Thank you.
You know, um, and, uh, so I'll, I'll do my best to do that, um, but I'll, I can dig into this a little bit more.
How soon would you like to come back?
To talk about this?
I mean, you'd have to be in April, I think.
Yeah, April.
Because there's three of us.
About April, April's, April sixteenth, we have.
There's a public hearing, there's no meeting.
Oh, what's the net, what's the meeting?
Hold on just a second, um, the, the next meeting.
The next meeting is April twenty-something?
Twenty-third.
April twenty-third?
Yeah, I could probably come up with something, you know.
That's about, what, six weeks, five weeks?
April twenty-third.
Yeah.
Well, uh, just some kind of update, is if you have any direction of where you think we should be going with kind of leveling our field, so that it looks a little, a little askew right now.
Yeah, it's just, um, you know, it's a, I'm a very analytical, like, the numbers are the numbers kind of thing, right? And so, um, if, if, if people think they're being over-assessed, I ask why, and if they're being under-assessed, I tell them why, you know, like, that sort of thing, so. I, I have no problem doing that, um, it's interesting, you know, waterfront's, if waterfront's here and this is here, you just have to show that, right? You have to really vet that out.
I think that seems like that would be maybe something to, to look at.
Start.
To start on that block of people, to get them up to the same as residential that lives in, like, the rural area, there's definitely.
So I can dig into that.
Something going on there. Thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thanks so much.
No problem.
So we're gonna close the assessor meeting now and open the select board, thank you. We, oh, we can keep these, right? Uh, we need a motion to sign the warrants.
Motion to sign the warrants?
Still have a second.
Um, I'll second it, I just have one question, I noticed in there in the school appropriations, we cut it as, as eighty-nineteen, but just always, it's always been that way, yes.
All in favor for the warrants? Nancy seconded.
Warrants.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Are you guys voting for the warrants?
Yeah, we just did.
These two.
Dan's been two of the top ten. Do you two have four guests for the warrant?
Dan?
Yeah, who?
You two.
Four, we got four, is it?
All in favor?
Oh, five amends.
Okay.
Happy to talk to you guys.
Thanks, Mark.
Oh, excuse me.
We're just open to the public at all?
We have a full schedule, this was an assessor's meeting that he was explaining to the board. If you have a question with him, he has a phone number?
I spoke with Mark, he's a very nice guy, and he understands my situation.
Okay, so it would be, if it's a personal situation, you would go directly to him? This was an overview of what?
I can talk to you, I got some stuff that you want to talk about.
Yeah, it sounds good, Mark.
So I need a motion to approve the minutes of February twenty-sixth?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second, all in favor? Okay, so, um, we're gonna table the recycling, so I need a motion, I'll make a motion to retable this recycling center discussion since we don't have anyone here. All in favor?
Bruce says to send his apologies, he was planning on being here, but he comes out with pneumonia here, and they told him it's contagious.
We don't want that. There's quite a bit of stuff going around.
Yeah, probably got it from Carol.
And while.
What? You started with Carol?
I said she probably got it from Carol.
Cut it out, I wasn't in here, that's why I didn't come, I didn't want to get anybody sick.
I'm saying, while Mark was talking about the assessing, I handed out a updated contract, animal.
Yeah, so that's next, I got.
So that's why.
She's here.
Yes.
So, um.
Jessica, Jessica.
Jessica, come, come on, come on down. Hi, thank you so much.
And I have papers for you to sign for yearly, Jessica.
So this is just a more, um, what it, what it covers, the three hundred dollars quarter.
Yes. Yeah, I added to the end of the contract, or the end of the part of where it's three hundred dollars quarterly, um, that the fee covers all services rendered and releases, uh, the town a move at, any further costs that are incurred upon the acceptance of the.
Oh, that's excellent.
And I feel like this is the best deal we can get while still supporting local shelters, she's open twenty-four seven.
Yes, and looks great, we just needed a, wonderful that you got that, don't think?
And, um, and you guys, if the owner becomes known, it's also written in here, if the owner's known.
Yeah, do they have to get paid then?
That they pay.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
They pay for the.
Is that in here somewhere, did I miss that? Because that's exactly what I was thinking, I was, the owner's got his financial responsibility.
And the actual, uh, Nancy, I don't see that that involves us.
No, I'm just.
I mean, it's not our liability.
Well, we would have to pay the fees if the owner doesn't claim the dog.
And that's not what that says, it says that once the dog goes there, that.
Oh, yeah, no, once it goes there, the three hundred dollar quarterly, like, covers all of that.
Covers everything.
Like, it covers that as well.
Yes, so it's up to them to recoup, recoup the cost from the owner, not us.
Right, right, for any other incidental, and the issue's gonna charge them for shelter fees on top of that, which, which is where she would recover her money for that.
Yeah, yeah.
And such, where the three hundred covers for any of our animals that we have that where the owner isn't known, and, you know.
Where is this shelter?
Um, well, it's in East Machias, it's a new one, it's where the old pet groom is.
Okay.
She still is a pet groom.
Yeah, she took, she took over for, yeah, parks and bubbles, yeah, and she just, she just signed up, and she's doing great, her new shelter looks amazing, and.
Oh, that's great.
And she said that she's only gonna work with me if I'm the ACO for the town, she'll only work for towns that I'm ACO for.
So I may, I, I would like to make a motion that we allow our ACO to sign this, as lo- along with Suzette to sign it, one for the town and our ACO both together, that they sign this agreement.
I'll second that.
All in favor? So we'll have you sign and, and Suzette, and that, we can do that now.
You still trapping Bieber?
Oh, yeah.
When can you come out?
So why don't you do that now for her, and then she can take that with you, make a copy, go ahead and do all that. We'll do one.
Money in term, too.
She's gonna just make a copy, that's in the.
Have you had that?
We've got the office.
Go, yeah, go in the office and do that.
Oh, yeah, you're talking about the Dallas Coastal Conservancy next anyway.
Yeah, okay, perfect. So the next thing on the agenda is.
Oh, he's wicked.
Is Down East Coastal Conservancy, I, I know where the lot is on Dewey-Maori, I know you walked that with them. I don't think that we can accept anything without the town permission, ten, it has to be at the annual town report, uh, meeting in August, or we have to have a special town meeting for it.
I think we're allowed to accept, yes.
We're not allowed to accept pieces of property, we couldn't even accept a park bench.
Well, and my question is, does the town at all benefit from them handing this to us?
Well, the only thing I.
I.
And it's a small lot.
I know, but it's a buildable lot.
I think there was something on there that when we were discussing drainage, Dicky, wasn't that lot the lot that the man was explaining that, that the conservancy owned, and there was, it was.
I'm not sure if it's that one or if it's the one around the corner.
Okay.
Because there's two, there's two spots, but if that's one of them, then yes.
Because there was one that was supposed to help with the drainage, but we couldn't touch it because it was owned by the conservancy, so that, and that, for that reason, it would be beneficial of the town to take the property. Because it's a terrible drainage issue there.
Well, part of it too was because it was landstorm issues out back, and that prevented anything from running off, so I.
So, um.
Was there, was there an article that allowed us to dispose of property?
Used to.
You can get it out in the best interest.
Yeah, but we can't anymore because we've got all that.
What I'm saying is maybe.
We can't accept, we can't accept.
So your, your position that we just put to the August vote, or you're suggesting that?
Yeah, uh, well, yes, go ahead, Mike.
Is there a lot number to this?
Should be.
Yeah, there is.
Zero seventy-one.
What is it?
Zero seventy.
So that's the one on Dewey-Maori between Craig's Trap Yard.
Like, MAF sixteen lot, zero seventy-one.
That's, that's drainage, it's a wetland.
Yeah, so it's a drainage thing?
Right.
Yeah, it's, I don't think it is buildable.
No.
No, no. It's probably not worth anything to sell, it will be off the tax map, but what is, what is the taxes now?
Well, it's owned by a nonprofit, it's a nonprofit, can you tax it?
Well.
Yeah, I think it's a fifteen hundred dollar value, I think that's what the town added on there.
Assessed.
So, I mean, one of the better things perhaps would be to offer to the property owners on both sides, maybe they can. It's a drainage trench for the backyard neighborhood.
Yes, and we couldn't touch anything.
I don't think you're gonna divide it to either property owner, so why would they not, and others, just kinda make them pay more on whatever you attach it to?
I.
Because you just remain a town lot for drainage.
Or she was just not accepted and it stays there.
That's my point, yeah.
It stays the conservancy.
Why do you have any good?
I think we defer to Dicky going out and looking at it to see whether it's helpful for drain, drain, drainage, because I think, I think.
The only way it would be is if there was a way to, for, to go across the road, I was, I was thinking it was already on the shore side of the road.
It is on the shore side of the road, is it not?
No, it's.
It's on the other side.
That's what I'm saying, it needs, it needs to actually escape to be able to go left.
Oh, who owns the one across, across the way from that?
They do.
They do too?
I'm pretty sure.
Well, if they, why wouldn't they get rid of that one? Well, maybe we're.
It's bigger.
I'd like to get them an answer, I guess, and so.
Why don't we find out if they'd be willing to give us the piece of property that we do need for drainage?
Right.
So the moral of that.
That would make sense.
Moral of that opportunity would, we're not going to accept the offer for the property and tell them that?
We're gonna just, we're not gonna make a decision right now until we see if the, the other, other lot is available.
Does it have to go before the town's people?
Yes, and it has to go.
Why let them go, let them do all that rather than us taking it to the townspeople? If they want to sell it or get rid of it, let them do it.
I'm just looking for the benefit of the town, and if, if the, if the, it's a lot.
Is there, is there anything advantageous to us, I mean, knowing the water problem that we have down in that side of town, and?
I was under the impression we had a discussion with them anyway, once before, I think Melissa Lee was involved, and that there was supposed to have been a drone flown over it, because when we had the real big winds, and the boardwalk was tore up in the Hollywoods, and all that down there, it caused a blockage somewhere, or it did something, so that the natural flow of what was going on there was no longer happening, and I don't know if that's happened.
So I think more investigation needs to happen before we make any decisions.
I guess it would have been nice to have that happen before tonight, then, I mean, we knew it was gonna happen.
Uh, I didn't put this on the agenda, I did approve of it, but I thought we knew a little bit more about it. But now Dicky's here saying that properties on the, um, on the other side is more important than one on the opposite side of the road from the drainage, so I guess we need to go back and talk to them again.
Can we have it for the, nothing makes any difference, can we have it for the twenty-sixth, just to get it going, or do you guys want to be here to?
Yeah, we, I'd like to be here, I don't think a lot needs to be put on the, with only three people here, I don't think a lot needs to be put on the twenty-sixth.
When can we talk about it again?
And you already have another public hearing for shellfish on the twenty-sixth.
So the third of April, then?
Ninth of April.
No.
Ninth, whatever the next one is in April.
Whatever, whoever, who's gonna do it? Call them.
Oh.
Are you gonna call them, Suzette?
I don't even know what the, yeah, because I don't know what it was, Beau, I, I was.
I'll have them come in.
Okay, I'm. Um, April, April ninth.
And it's still, we're not gonna make a decision, it's only gonna be whether it's gonna go in front of the town people or not go in front of the town people.
And that was my perspective, is just try to get some consensus from the board and Dicky, if it's of any value to us, and that's what we need to do about.
See, I didn't even know nothing about this particular piece, I was thinking that when they were talking about us, how we did the, the drainage, put the catch basin in with the culvert going overboard on the outside, that to talk about that draining was what the conversation that we had prior to this. So I wasn't even aware of this one being talked about now.
Mike?
Is there, was there a culvert that ran from that lot across the, under the road? I saw you fix a box further down, which was in that location, right adjoining that property.
No.
Okay, so there never was a culvert?
Well, I shouldn't say there never was, but we didn't do anything there. If there was, it's buried deep.
Okay, other business. Sewer commitment you have for us?
Yes, I think so.
We need five minutes before our public hearing, so we need to get done. We have five minutes left, and then we're gonna have a five-minute break before a public hearing.
I had a quick thing on the other business.
Well, we're not there yet, so let's do what's in other business, and then we'll get to you.
You just called other business, yeah? Yeah.
And we all have things here we're doing first.
Five seconds, honest to God.
Okay, Mark, when we finish the sewer commitment and the septic replacement ad, you're more than welcome to add in other business.
Public comment or whatever, that may, won't take long.
I make a motion, we assign the sewer commitment.
Second.
All in favor? Is this one page, Suzette?
Yeah, just the top one, let's just fill it, I call information.
Okay, septic replacement ad, this is your information?
I'm putting an ad in the Quody Tides for a septic replacement grant that's been a hundred percent awarded, um, out on County Road, so we're just gonna get a bid up there so people can bid on it, add up best they can bid on it, and get it back, and hopefully get it fixed.
Okay, Mark, you're on.
Three or four months ago, we of the board voted unanimously to have the personal property tax situation pursued, and I'm curious as to where we are now with this, Suzette?
Well, I don't know, I haven't, um, I've been running double duty this week, so I don't have an answer.
Well, that's, that's just, it's been three or four months, I'm wondering, so has anything been done, or are we?
We, you wrote, oh.
Well, we eliminated anything within six years, correct? And now you're talking about enforcement of collections, is that what you're looking at?
We voted unanimously three or four months ago to pursue that avenue, and I'm wondering what has been done to date.
Well, right now Ruby is, was under the knife, and is not here to answer.
Well, that's, that's two days ago, but.
Yes.
So can we have an answer? So can we have an answer as to what?
Nothing's been started yet.
Okay, I will be asking on a regular basis, so I expect...
You'll get an, you'll get an answer on a regular basis, sorry.
I expect something next time.
Well, we can put down, um, we get an update, put an update down for you.
Yes.
But that would be Ruby, that she is our tax collector.
Hopefully she's feeling well.
Yes.
Yes.
It's really not Suzette's job?
Well, isn't she Suzette's, I mean, isn't Suzette her boss? That's where I'm going with that.
Yes, she's one, yes, she's one with that, yes.
Uh, committee updates?
That's why I had that on the agenda and took it off.
Nothing much. I heard you had a great Shellfish committee meeting.
We had excellent initiative, it was probably a record setter, and, uh...
So we're gonna hear about it in a few minutes.